said customers had been let down and that the company had fallen short of its own standards.
Phil Mercer is in Sydney checking markets Dow S and P and Nasdaq futures reach up four tenths of a percent. The 10 year interest rate is below four and a half percent, the lowest in a month. Investor of legend Warren Buffett calls his company's annual shareholder meeting Woodstock for capitalists, but it was a reflective gathering over the weekend, given the death at age 99 last year of Buffett's longtime business partner Charlie Munger. This year's meeting had a special emphasis on the issue of succession. Here's Marketplace's Nova Safo.
Berkshire Hathaway is essentially two companies, a conglomerate that owns various businesses from Sees Candies to Geico Insurance. It's also a massive investment fund. And for the first time, Warren Buffett, over the weekend, said he expects his chosen successor to lead both of those businesses. That person is Greg Abel, who's the longtime head of Berkshire's utility business. He sat next to Buffett for the annual question and answer session with shareholders, occupying the seat previously held by Charlie Munger, who together with Buffett built Berkshire Hathaway into an investment powerhouse. Munger died in November at the age of 99. For his part, Abel told shareholders that he would maintain the investment principles set by Buffett and Munger. And what are those principles? Buffett put it this way, investing in something with little risk that makes a lot of money. Sounds simple enough, and yet the company is sitting on a cash pile of $189 billion. Buffett said right now, he's not seeing a lot of opportunities for new investments. I'm Nova Safo for Marketplace.
Marketplace Morning Report is supported by Twilio Segment. Segment helps every team access good data, data that's real time, clean, and accurate. The result is relevant customer experiences that drive real revenue. Learn more at segment.com.
The Biden administration is expanding healthcare access for people covered by the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals Program, also known as DACA. The Department of Health and Human Services has finalized rules allowing DACA recipients to enroll in health plans through the Affordable Care Act marketplaces. Here's our Kimberly Adams in Washington.
Growing up in Texas, Josue Rodriguez says health insurance was always something of a luxury.
It was sort of like a joke that if you are not full on dying, then we would have a home remedy to take care of your health.
Rodriguez came to the States with his family from Mexico when he was eight years old. His DACA status allows him to live and work here, and he currently has insurance through his job. But-
I've always been paying attention to the health insurance component of the jobs that I've been seeking because I know that private insurance is so expensive and DACA recipients were not able to access the marketplace.
But now, starting November 1st with open enrollment, they can. There are about 600,000 DACA recipients living in the U.S. right now, says Stephen Yale Layer, a professor of immigration law practice at Cornell.
And the new rule estimates that about 100,000 of them are currently uninsured and can qualify for this kind of health insurance through the Affordable Care Act because of the relatively low-
This evening, plans to launch its first Starliner spaceship with a crew aboard. Test pilots Sunita Williams and Barry Wilmore are set for a test mission to the International Space Station and back. The Starliner's the nose section, designed to be reusable 10 times. The big stages pushing the thing are the time-tested Atlas V and Centaur rockets. Lunchtime 10:34 Eastern tonight from Florida. In New York, I'm David Brancaccio. It's the Marketplace Morning Report. 8:00 A.M., American Public Media.
This week on This American Life, for David, prom night was the culmination of years of effort.
You know, I changed a lot since sophomore year. I got into this crowd and stuff and they just changed. I changed my speech, my dress and all that stuff. I'm still the same person. I've changed. I'm just, this is a popular crowd. I'm just popular. The most gorgeous girl in school asked me for a prom. She says yes.
Prom night, damn, prom night this week.
Every Monday at 8:00, Saturday at 3:00 on Radio IQ.
Radio IQ is broadcasting in digital on WVTF Roanoke, WRIQ Charles City, Richmond, WURV Richmond, WVTU Charlottesville, WVTW Charlottesville, WVTR Marion, WISC FM Wise, WQIQ Spotsylvania, WIQR Lexington, WEHC Emory, and in Richmond on 92.5 and Fredericksburg on 94.9. Radio IQ, a service of Virginia Tech.
Welcome to NewsHour. It's live from the BBC World Service in London. I'm Tim Franks. The Israeli military tells 100,000 Palestinians to leave Rafa and head to an area by the coast called Al Mawasi. One Gazan tells us it'll be no refuge.
The Mawasi area is frighteningly full of residents, so that there are areas where you cannot move because of the tents stuck there.
Also, it's not just about weapons. Ukraine struggles to conscript enough soldiers. Argentina's radical new president, he campaigned brandishing a chainsaw. Now in power, Javier Millay says he has no magic wand.
In economic-
2024 session of Roanoke City Council is hereby called to order, and I will ask our clerk, Mrs. McCord, to please call the roll.
Ms. Whiteboy.
Here.
Mr. Volason.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Mr. Pretty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here and a quorum, Mr. President. Council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RV TV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And video stream through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeVirginia, VA. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. All right, items for action this morning. There's a communication from the mayor's office requesting the council convene in a closed meeting to discuss vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council pursuant to Section 2.2 - 3711 Code of Virginia as a amendment. Need a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And a motion passed. Thank you. There's a communication from our city attorney requesting a closed meeting to consult with legal counsel regarding actual litigation, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2 - 3711 Code of Virginia as a amendment. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Volason. Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And a motion passed. Thank you. All right, are there any items listed on the 2:00 PM council docket requiring any further discussion or clarification? All right. With that, we'll go right into our briefings, and I'm pleased to recognize our city manager, Ms. Cal, to introduce the briefings this morning.
This is a very, very short presentation, and it's really intended to answer any questions remaining that you might have. But this is the second to last step in the adoption of the FY '25 budget. Of course, we start this process all the way back in November with your retreat, really even preceding that. We actually start in the fall with your strategic planning retreat, then move into the budget retreat. And then, of course, there's quite a bit of action that happens with the staff in terms of soliciting projects and proposals and reviewing those proposals. Of course, we have monthly briefings here, and all of that culminated in the April 15th presentation of the recommended budget, which you've had. And then, of course, we've met with all, nearly all of you individually or two at a time to kind of discuss further any of the items that were presented with the recommended budget. And then you had the public hearings on April 25th on the budget, as well as the tax rates, sent out recently the notes from those joint or from those individual meetings that we had with you all. And then today is really kind of the last workshop with, to be able to answer any additional questions that you might have leading up to the adoption of the budget next week. And so that is the intent of today, which is to try to answer any remaining questions that you might have regarding the recommended budget and then have us ready. And of course, on the 13th, as you know, not only is that, of course, the approval of the budget, but there's a whole collection of other ordinances that are attached to that, the pay ordinance and fee schedules and all those items also, all of which have been included in the budget discussions, but require separate motions and separate actions as we work our way through. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions from anything that has arisen, either as a result of the public hearings or from the conversations that we've had regarding the recommended budget.
Ms. Whiteboy.
Yeah, Ms. Cal, I'll start with a question about the Jefferson Center. Did we have any proposed timelines for what we can and cannot do as far as CIPs for that building?
It is on the list right now in the unfunded category. If you remember, though, we have, coming up in June, we have an extended workshop, I think June 18th. Does that sound right?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and the intent of that workshop, so much as we've done in the past with, we did a workshop on homelessness, we did a workshop on gun violence off-site, and this is a longer version, so like a four-hour workshop. So the intent of that workshop on June 18th is actually to do that, is to have that discussion regarding the operating and capital needs of both what have been expressed to us from the Jefferson Center and the Burgland Center together. So, and we actually just last week met with Cyrus and also with Robin to kind of begin preparing for that meeting. So you'll get information ahead of that meeting that will be covered then in that, in that discussion. So, yeah. So it, and the, and the result will be, my guess is the result will be additional conversations following that regarding the, the management structure that exists in place for those, as well as any kind of operational subsidy discussions, as well as any kind of capital discussions with those. But, but yes, that's scheduled for the 18th of June.
For the 18th of June.
Yes.
Did he convey any immediate needs?
Yeah, they had, if you remember when he presented, when Cyrus presented here, he had kind of presented, and prior to that, he had presented to me actually kind of three categories. I think he presented to you all two categories. One of those was a, an ask for kind of an immediate infusion of cash, if you will. The other was the longer CIP needs. The third one that he didn't share with you all was also the possibility of operational subsidies, and they didn't bring those up at that meeting. So the, the more immediate needs were a range of things, including there was some carpeting and some HVAC improvements and stuff.
The HVAC was what I was-
And some other items. The other one, and that was, I'm going off memory here, but I want to say approaching $300,000, I think, is what was inside that package. And then it was about $8 million, I think, is what they had shared relative to the longer capital items with it. In the conversation that we just had with, with Cyrus, we did talk about if at the June 18th meeting, you all have progressed far enough to kind of have an idea of what you want to do with the Jefferson Center on both the shorter term needs as well as those longer term needs, that there is the potential to look at something off-cycle tied with the FY '24 year-end surplus, so the year we're currently in, maybe another source of revenue. Now, we have to bring that back to you all for consideration at that time, but that, that is a possibility rather than only waiting until the development of the FY '26 budget.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
Sure. And again, we'll have a lot more conversation about that on the 18th.
Okay. Any other?
Yes.
More others?
I know, Mr. Cal, you mentioned in the update from the, from our budget discussions that there aren't any information that we see for line, you know, line item budgets. We just see the categories or how it's laid out.
Right, by priorities and programs, yes.
Well, my question for you would be, because of that, can you tell us of any unfunded services or programs that any of the departments have asked for? I guess as an overview, because I don't know and I won't know until it happens.
Sure, sure. So the way we build the, the budget, a couple, a couple of things happen. So at the very, very beginning of the budget, the departments start meeting with the assistant city managers over the items that they've identified as potential needs. And that, those lists are extensive. Those, those lists always well exceed what we have available for, for funding. Then there are instructions that come following meetings from you all as to what our priorities are and also what revenue we expect to have available. At, and in the past, typically what that would result in is submission of requests from departments that still largely far exceed what we have available. And then the budget committee meets over a period of time to really start prioritizing and identifying those. This year, there was actually very little that was actually submitted that wasn't funded. And the reason for that is because all the directors actually did a really good job this year of focusing on the priority, which was the compensation piece of it. So, so there are definitely some items that were identified by the departments that were, were not funded. Most of those tended to be kind of one-time expenditures, which again, often will kind of set those aside. We have that growing list of if there is a year-end surplus, we start looking at those. A good example of that is there were a number of technology items that were requested. We were able to fund about a million and a half dollars worth of those technology items, but not all of the remaining items. That, though, then does become a priority when we do a year-end surplus. So like for this FY '23 year-end surplus, you may remember the items that we shared with you, there were some technology items, and that's an example of how that kind of moves forward. But really, this year, there were not that many of those individual items. There were some, but, but not that many of those. And again, I think it's because the directors actually understood the focus was really trying to make sure we could get the compensation piece in hand. But we always, there always are going to be needs at every departmental level that exceed what we have available for, for revenue and stuff. So, yeah.
With regards to some of those needs, such as because we're still dealing with the gun violence throughout the communities, and we have the Reset Team that's online, onboard, and we have other community action plans that are enforced. Did any of, anyone, any items from the police department, did they get funded, such as requests for additional staff?
Yeah, they actually didn't, the chief did not make any additional requests for staff. What the chief is doing is he is actually reallocating some of his staff. So if you all know, we think at last count, we had maybe 38 sworn positions that were vacant within the department. He has somewhere around 15, 18 folks coming through the next academy with it. And so what, what the chief has started doing is looking at some of those positions and seeing if, while we go through a period of rehiring, which could take a number of years to go through that, if those positions can and should be repurposed temporarily into other, and when I say temporary, not temporarily for those people that are getting hired into those roles, but if we get fully staffed, we can continue to overhire at that point so that there's not a reduction in the number of officers. So he definitely has done that. He has probably, and I'm going off memory here, but I want to say as many as 15 positions that have gone in and repurposed. So those are positions that he's able to hire civilians for that will actually allow him to advance on some of those other objectives. A lot of them have things to do with sort of data analysis or the crime center that they're standing up and those kinds of activities, but no request for additional sworn positions. Again, kind of makes sense when we got vacancies that you wouldn't, you wouldn't have additional positions created. He did make a number of requests for equipment as well as other technology improvements. All of those are being met either through the general fund budget or through the grants that we're working with the Attorney General on. And there are two additional grant rounds that are coming up in the fall. And so the, the GVI or the Group Violence Intervention process we're working with the Attorney General on is designed to get us to the point at which then we'll be ready to make those applications for those funds. Most of those will go toward, I think, social services that are designed to aid in the, in the gun violence intervention efforts, but there will also be some technology items in there as well. So.
With the opera money that will be, come into an end, and we were using some of that for the whole of government.
Yes.
Is there money set aside to continue to fund what we have in place now?
There is. So there's actually an increase in the, in the general fund expenditures this year because we're already starting to roll off of those dollars. And so all right, we've been spending around 250, $300,000 a year on those efforts. And so we're trying to maintain that same level as we, as we move forward. The same is also true with, we've been very successful in securing a number of grants from either the Attorney General or DCJS, and some of those are also rolling off. So if you remember, maybe three, four years ago, when we brought on Reset, that started as a grant. We then moved that onto the general fund. We then got a grant for the youth and gang violence intervention, Chris, Chris's role in there, and, and two outreach workers. Last year, we moved Chris on to the general fund side. The budget this year moves one of those two outreach workers onto the general fund side. The other outreach worker is still grant funded, but yes, we're going to have to continue to do that as we, as we move forward. But that money is covered in this, in this budget. We will still be-
Maintain what we have.
Yes, yes. We will still be pursuing other grant dollars to actually expand, not just maintain what we have. And, and again, I think we've been very successful with those. I think we'll still be able to do that.
Now, when we move from a grant position into a permanent position, is that considered a new position or are we repurposing a position?
A little bit of both. So in some instances, I, Reset, for example, when we moved Lloyd over, that was a new position. So we just added that into the FTE count. In a couple of the other instances, we've been able to take perennially vacant positions and in effect repurpose them so we don't have to create a new FTE. Matter of fact, this budget has, I think it's total is like four, four and a half less FTEs than the preceding year because we were able to do that in some of those instances. So it just depends as we, as we, depending on how many of those positions exist as to whether we can repurpose or if we add in another position.
What is the total number for our workforce now?
It is, it's a little over-
Because I'm trying to, I'm just trying to recall if we're decreasing or-
It's a slight decrease year over year. It's around 1,800.
Because that's what I'm thinking, about 1,800.
Yeah.
But I'm just trying to-
Yeah, if you give me a few moments, I can hopefully find. I was actually just looking at that information.
And I recall reading in your notes, we talked about the deer culling, and I think we're covered for the upcoming fiscal year to, to continue that program.
Yeah, this year we did it, you know, it had been suspended with COVID, and this year we did it out of kind of available surplus or one-time funds. In the FY '25 budget, we now have restored that back into the base budget. We will, though, be also talking with the vendor when we get, it'll be in that November, kind of January timeframe again. And at that point, if it looks like they can actually offer more services than what the current budget will permit, we may expand that contract with a one-time expenditure also. So we have the same roughly $40,000 in there, which allows us to cull 200 and something deer in it. If at that time, we can, he can, if he has the capacity, then we can take additional one-time dollars and add to that and get more deer taken in that. But that will now be a part of the ongoing base budget as it was pre-COVID. So, yeah. And to answer your question earlier, we are at the, the FTEs is at 1,804.
Okay.
And some of the, there were, if you remember, there were a few positions added. So let me, let me remind everyone what those positions were. They were added. Most of these were added by actually taking an otherwise available position and repurposing it. But one was one of those outreach workers that I just mentioned from the youth and gang violence prevention efforts, that is, has been grant funded and will be rolling into the general fund. One other outreach worker remains grant funded. So next year, we'll have to deal with that, that item. You also may remember, we added two, or part of two Parks and Recreation positions. One of those was a supervisor and one was a program leader. This is the, this is the beginning of staffing for the Washington Park Pool coming online. The reason we did part of it is because, if you remember, the pool will come online in the summer. So we'll hire those positions in the spring to get them ready for that. The other positions will come due in FY '26. And we'll start not only staffing out completely the Washington Park Pool, but start staffing for the Eureka Recreation Center also. So those were two, two positions. And then there are four positions added out of Stormwater, a maintenance technician, two, a maintenance technician, three, and two civil engineers. Those positions, though, are paid for out of the Stormwater Fund, not out of the, the general fund piece of it. So those were the, the new positions that were added for the year, although again, the total number of positions actually has decreased year over year.
And I think, I'm just looking at my notes here. With regards to, that one, I don't think I need to ask that one. We talked about the public safety. With regards to the youth recreation programs, I know we talked a little bit about that during the couple of budget studies. And you, you mentioned, and I'm just trying to, just for you to reiterate it for me.
Sure.
That we are no longer outsourcing, that all the money has come back in into the programs.
Correct.
And they will be done in-house.
Correct. That's correct. Yes. And, and so all, and not only is, are those dollars that we've been using before with outsourcing available, we've also increased those expenditures so that the amount of programming can be expanded. Now, the, is always kind of the wild card in that is that presumes or assumes that we can actually meet those staffing needs. And so we'll find that out as we go into the summer. So when we start hiring those kind of seasonal workers and stuff, which is why we outsourced it a couple of years ago, is we couldn't find those employees. So far, I haven't heard any issues with that.
Right.
But, but yes.
And I know we, for me, we, we tend to talk about what's going to be going on for programs for Northwest. I'm curious as to the programs that are for Southeast maybe or Lower Southwest, Upper Southwest, and then the Salem Avenue near the Hurt Park.
Sure, sure.
What type of programs?
Yeah, and I'll have to-
Will they be having, not that I'm trying to put you on the spot.
Right, I'll have to get you that. I mean, I, you know, we've got-
I'm just curious.
The majority of the programs, of course, that we do is the support we offer for the recreation clubs across the four quadrants. So that's where, you know, that's where your basketball teams, baseball teams, football teams, and so on are. And in the last two seasons, basketball and baseball in particular, those numbers have actually gone up quite a bit. And we had more basketball teams than we've had in years in the program. We had sections of the city that have never had a baseball team, or at least not in many, many years. And, and those are now available. So that's going to be the primary focus of it. Then there are other programming, some of which is tied to the Star City Safe, which is in Northwest for the most part. But others are definitely like our summer school programs, after-school programs, might be at Preston Park, for example. But we can definitely get you a list of at least what's programmed out through at least the summer.
Yes.
For, across the entire city. So we can certainly-
So are we partnering with the schools on any of the after-school programs? Are we just solely using community partners and the schools are doing their own?
Mostly community, mostly community partners. Now, some of our, some of our rec club activities require a partnership with the city. So again, basketball was a really good example where most of those take place in school gyms. But for the most part, that the after-school piece is really kind of a standalone. Now, this year, this year, assuming that the state actually approves the, the budget anytime soon, the schools will be offering actually quite a bit more programs during the summer also because, if you remember, the governor put in his budget a proposed, a proposal for funding for, or it was a request actually from, I think, the schools to the governor, the governor included in his budget, for additional funding for them to do after-school kind of pilot programs and stuff. So they'll be doing things also in the schools. But for the most part, the summer, the after-school programs, summer school programs are operated independently.
And so with regards to that, with the schools doing their programs and the city doing theirs, will any of them, and I know I'm putting you on the spot.
No, it's fine.
Will they be overlapping? I'm just trying to make sure I'm not hearing duplication of services or we-
Yeah, probably.
Or we're talking to coordinate not to do something that they are doing or they are, they are offering.
Yeah, I mean, there definitely are, there definitely is what I would call kind of communication, not just with the schools, but also with the other providers. Think of the YMCA and others.
Right.
You know, and I wouldn't say coordination. I think we're just all are aware of what each is doing. What we've seen in the past, and I think it'll be no different this time, is the, the demand for those programs far exceeds what the supply is. So even if the schools or the YMCA or we are offering the exact same services at the exact same time, it's fine because there are still more kids actually trying to get into those programs than those programs are available. The advantage of each, though, is everybody's at different kind of price points. You know, some of the things we offer will be at no cost. Some of them we offer are at reduced- of them we offer are at reduced or have scholarships. The YMCA might have a different price. The Boys and Girls Club will have a different one. So yeah, I'm not usually too concerned about the duplication or it taking place at the same time as much as it is just getting even more programs because we always have more. We can't, the community can't meet the demand for those programs with them. But we do have that communication. I'm not going to consider it coordination in the sense of, you know, we'll offer these two weeks, you guys offer it those two weeks. It usually is, everybody's offering everything for that summer period and trying to serve as many of the youth as we can, and giving them as many choices too.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see if we're making good use of the money on both, on all ends.
Right, right.
Because money is so scarce that that's where I'm coming when I talk about the
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I think yes. And the reason I say that is because, again, I think the, the list of youth that actually want to get into these programs is usually longer than the programs are available. So if anything, I think over time, you know, the more dollars we can put into those programs, or, or the more dollars our community can put into those community programs, the better with it. And there are, there are deviations. Like there'll be some that will be, you know, like there'll be STEAM camps for kids that are interested in that. There'll be others that are focused on sports. There are others more focused on going out and into the surrounding community for, you know, hiking and those kinds of things and stuff.
Now, you're hitting on what, that's what I mean when I'm, when I speak about the programs, mainly for the underserved, the marginalized communities, Upper Southwest, where most of the kids don't have access to, to centers like Hurt Park. They are just kind of isolated. So I'm just thinking about the summer coming, you know, when the summer comes and it's hot.
Yeah, yeah.
What are these kids going to be doing? I think it's just a breeding ground for crime.
Yeah.
And so I'm just.
Yeah, and we'll definitely give you, and we'll try to pull not only, not only what we know to be our offerings for the summer, but if we're able to actually pull what we know the schools are doing.
Yeah.
And our other community partners, we can assemble all of that. You know, it's been our experience in the last several years that any, anyone that makes, you might be able to say, I couldn't get into a program, but it would be very, very difficult for someone in our community to say they, they didn't have, there wasn't something available. I mean, there is an abundance of things available. They may fill up very quickly and stuff. But yeah, we can pull all of those.
The main thing is they may know about it, but there's just a lack of access.
Yeah.
So that's where I'm at. So if you could, and then maybe we could share that with the public, what is being offered around in those, in those quadrants or in those sections of the city.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think would be good.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. And like I said, we'll try to get the resources from all the community partners so that it's not just what we're doing, but also what the schools and others are doing. Absolutely.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody, anybody else?
Thank you, Bob. Thanks for the update on this and all the great work from the, with the staff. One of the questions I raised during our, I've raised before in this session and raised in our two-by-two was the tax rate. One of the questions you ask us, beginning with our retreat every year, is if we want to consider any adjustments to the tax rate. So you ask that consistently. And we have some limited discussion on it. At our last meeting, we, we made clear that we, there was no interest in increasing the tax rate. But I do want to talk a little bit about, and see among council if there's any interest in reducing the tax rate. One of the questions I raised was, and you brought to us information about the implications if we reduce one cent a year. And I asked in the work session about reducing it to $1.19, which would be a three-cent decrease. And I appreciate the information you shared because that would be three, about a $3.2 million reduction in projected revenue. And based on our, the way our budget is laid out, my understanding is that would affect about $1.28 million for the schools and about $1.92 for the city. Could you talk a little bit about, on the city side of that, what, what adjustments would have to be made at whatever level? You know, this is, this is at the $1.19, so it would just get smaller based on graduation of those rates.
Yeah, absolutely. And I guess I'll preface that first by kind of reiterating what you had indicated, Vice Mayor, which is, the reason that we ask that question, starting back in November and working our way forward, is because, of course, we're building the budget. And I will answer these questions, and I also will remind everyone that we are one week away from budget adoption. So, and I'll start actually with what we shared with you at the April 1st meeting, which was, for every penny reduced, the impact is a reduction of revenue of just slightly over a million dollars. That, of course, increases year over year because, of course, the, hopefully, the values of real estate continue to increase. So the impact, if you will, or the benefit of that penny increases. But roughly, roughly, think in your mind, roughly a million dollars, of which, for that penny, about $420,000,000 is, is reduced to the schools, and about $640,000 is reduced to, to the city. So that, that's how those numbers of that three cent, if you went from 1.22 to 1.19, how you come up with kind of the impact to the schools being about 1.3 million, the impact to the city about 2 million. The way in which, if there was movement in that direction now, this not necessarily, would not necessarily have been the case if a couple few months ago, we would have built a different budget presenting to you. But now, what we would do is, if there was a change, because these are not one-time changes, if you change the tax rate, you have changed forever going forward the revenue that are coming in. So similarly, the reduction needs to be something that is recurring, not just a one-time kind of item associated with it. And so what we would likely do is I would look at kind of three categories to try to make up that, that difference with it. I would start with external agencies. The external agencies, and in those cases, we have a number of recommendations that are discretionary but intended to be recurring. So I will use the zoo as an example. We have proposed in the recommended budget, an increase of $100,000 for the zoo. The intent is that that's $100,000 new going forward. So it's a recurring expense. So I would, we would start with those kinds of expenses. There are, the majority of the increases for external agencies are not, are not discretionary. So think of Blue Ridge Behavioral. We have, we're compelled to provide that. So I can't take that off the list. But I'd start there and see how much money we would make up for in that regard with external agencies. I would then turn to the capital program and would need to actually consult our financial advisors to say, if, and I'm just making up a number right now, but if I needed to pull annually a million dollars of debt service out of the capital, what actually needs to come dollar-wise out of the capital program? Because it's not just a million, because that million dollars is actually probably buying six or seven million dollars' worth of debt over a period of time. But we would, we would run that number with them. Remember, we add money actually to capital each year in order to meet the, the capital needs that we currently have. But I would start with that. And then if, if that doesn't close the gap completely, your only other option is then to turn to compensation. And most likely, that would come in the form of going from 3% to 2%. And that would probably be half a million, $600,000 savings. Because again, you got to find things that are kind of, are recurring, not just the, the one-time. And those are just things, there's probably three or four different scenarios that we could present to that. But given where we are right now, that's where I would start. Those are the items that I would begin looking at. And similarly, you know, there would be a question asked ultimately of the school board in a similar vein, because they, they would too have to figure out, okay, if we're having 1.3 million, using that example, less in our budget, they also would need to go back and determine what's the best way in which to absorb that reduction. And I would guess, this is just speculation on my part, they too would be looking at something that would be recurring. Because again, they're not really one-time, it's not really a one-time impact associated with, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
So that's where I would start, if that's where we were, given the time we have, and also in a way in which kind of responds to those kind of ongoing expenses associated with it. Not, again, would have approached that differently six months ago, as we built, as we built the budget and stuff. Just at this point, that's kind of what you're, what you're sort of left with at this point.
Sure. And I appreciate that, that, the background on that. I know that we, you know, we here seek to be good stewards of the city's dollars, the taxpayer dollars. We also can't control the, the valuation of housing and, and the market fluctuation, nor inflation. So we've got all of these things that are kind of working against each other, and the impact of that is felt on the, on the taxpayers. So I mainly wanted to bring this up to see if there, you know, if we as a council want to have further conversation about that rate, or if we feel good about where we are. And I, I don't know if we can speculate for next year. I know there are trends.
I think I did list in the, when we presented, when I presented the recommended budget, you may remember, one of the slides in there were sort of other considerations. And some of those considerations were costs that are increasing still, that we don't know exactly what those will look like. And those tended to be things related to inflation around construction. But I did identify in there also, really, this recognition that we can't, we can't continue to rely, not exclusively, so heavily on the increased value of existing property. You know, that's where, you know, try, and you, and you all have done this, you all have, through the zoning reform actions you took and through some other steps that you've taken, you have increased the potential for more construction activity. So the more construction activity and the more economic activity we have, the less and less burden you place on the existing homeowners to be able to kind of keep carrying the increased needs. So, so yes, I mean, I think it's something each year, but I, you know, we've gone through, fortunately, we've gone through a few years now with very robust housing value increases, which is good. It means our local economy is very strong. It means our housing market is very strong. But also is, is an acknowledgement that, you know, we may not be able to rely on that to meet our ever-increasing needs indefinitely because there is, obviously, it has an impact on homeowners. Now, you also expanded the relief available to lower-income homeowners so that more people qualify for freezes in their, in their real estate. You know, so there are those kinds of programs, certainly, that you've tried to address, at least those that are most in, most in need. Because remember, as we shared in April, the, the largest beneficiaries of any change in the tax rate are going to be your commercial and large landowner folks. I mean, so think of the, think of the folks that own rental property. I think the example I used was the $40 million District View project on 460. You know, that project will receive far more benefit with a tax rate reduction than would someone who owns a $100,000 home, as an example. So, but yes, it is, it is definitely on the list. And I think we will ask the same question at the beginning of the retreat next year, because it's a whole lot, I'm going to say easier, it's a lot more manageable to build the budget, knowing there is a desire to actually change a tax rate, up or down. But it's, you know, and we know pretty much by December, January, what the real estate market looks like it's going to do. So we have a pretty good idea of where things are and also what the benefit of any kind of reduction might be, as well as what the implications of it might be.
Thank you.
Let me just say, I'll, I'll come back down the line to you. I, I think, I'm pleased that the Vice Mayor brought that up. I mean, we, we think about that. We're thinking about what we can do to reduce taxes. But I think this year, it's, we're about a week and a half, a week and a half from adoption. I think it's kind of late. And then there's some, some reoccurring things that may happen, as you said. And, and that's going to go down the line. It's almost going to be a chain reaction. Because I mean, the school board is going to have to do some, some, really, some work in order to make that happen. So just right off the top, I think right now, it's, it's a train that pulled off. I don't know if we can catch it or not. So, and then maybe next year, some council will be able to talk a little bit about that next year. But anyway, that's my position. I'll go down the line.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just about to say the same thing. I think in the 11th hour, that would create its own set of challenges. And I think, you know, when we just talked about programs and adding programs, like Ms. Moon Reynolds said, and, you know, the Jefferson Center, all the needs that we have outstanding, you know, on our CIP list, I think would be kind of a challenge. Because once you reduce it, that is, like you said, Mr. Cowell, that is the rate moving forward. And nobody wants to hear the word increase. So I just think that, I just think that a reduction in the predicament that we're in right now financially, it would not be feasible for, for the city right now. Because we have so many things that are just sitting there waiting on us to get to, you know, kind of like the fire station and the library, some of the things that are really, really important to the city that we had to put off because of the funding. So I just think that, just the idea of a reduction, I certainly would not entertain that idea. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else? Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Yes, thank you. I'm glad the Vice Mayor did bring that back up. Because, you know, over two years, I have asked you about what other options we could use, what would, could we take away and what could we put in place? And you brought that back at one or two budget cycles, I mean, budget studies ago. And in looking at that scenario you gave, it really did not have a, a financial impact. Based on even for me, it was on a one cent, it was like $15. And then if I did the two, two, two cents off, it was no more than $30 some dollars, and then about $50 some. So I don't think the taxpayers, those homeowners who are seeking it, will really see a substantial impact of a change in their assessment. Because it's based on not the $100 per rate, but instead on the market. And I think it's just a matter of educating to show that. But at the same time, I think it's imperative to understand that if we did do that, what are we giving up? I, I look at, excuse me, services. What programs are we willing to sacrifice for that? However, even though I support that one down to the 1.19, I just still would look at and, and ask the, the taxpayers too. But also, I would like to see, and I think I mentioned this, in fact, I know I did, what is it, what other ways do we have of bringing in additional revenue? And instead of looking at the, the tax rate for the, the increase on the buildings that we see, what about the land, the vacant land? Maybe looking at something like that, who are holding on to land, if they are taxed more and bringing in more revenue, then it wouldn't be as much of a burden on the taxpayers. And also, I think Lou can answer this one. I believe the threshold was raised for the disabled, elderly, wasn't it raised to 81? Am I correct? Or were they just talking about that in the state? The threshold for, where we raised it to 53,000?
We have the authority to, to raise it, to whatever we want to say as a qualifications for that program.
Right. And if, and also looking at for our seniors, if anything, I would look for those who are coming into limited income. If there is something that could be done for them, raising that threshold again, from where we are at that we raised last year, that would also allow others, some more to qualify for. So for me, I know we are at the end, and I just wish we had had more discussion when it was on the table. And when I saw that, I didn't see that support from the council. So I knew there was no need to bring it up at this meeting with a week away to adopt. So I, I assumed that it would have gotten lost. The vote would have just been, would have failed. So I didn't bring it up.
I think the idea, you have raised it, I think Councilmember Pretty raised it also, of evaluating now that the state has given us a little more discretion on, on what you can do on land values versus the, the built sort of portion of the property and taking a look at that. So I think that is part of what will go into the discussion leading up to next year's budget discussion. As you said, that's really more of a revenue-generating piece than it is any kind of tax reduction necessarily with it. And I think you described it perfectly well, which is, any discussion regarding the tax rate up or down is really a balancing of the objectives of the tax burden on individuals and on businesses. Contrast it with what it is that you're needing to do in terms of, of services. Now, I will say that certainly, it is a whole lot easier to have those conversations when you're on the positive side of revenue generation, as we have been over the last few years. I mean, obviously, you know, we've been very fortunate that, even though, you know, y'all remember, because we show you that, that graphic all the time, that our purchasing power hasn't really changed since 2014. But thank goodness that the revenues are actually increasing so that at least we're not losing ground associated with that. So I, I don't want folks to think, oh, well, we're in a negative position therefore, you know, we wouldn't entertain anything like this. We are in a positive position in terms of revenue. And thank, thank goodness that we are associated with that. But I think your, your discussion is exactly the discussion that needs to take place, which is, if, if we were, so say we're fast forward and say we're all sitting in a room in, you know, November, and say we were at that point talking about a reduction in tax rates, you know, we can give you pretty much what the monetary sort of value is with that. Then it becomes a discussion of, okay, so what it becomes a discussion of, okay, so what would we, you know, I don't want to say forego, because you're probably not foregoing, you're probably adjusting something at that point. And again, it could be on the compensation side, it might be, you know, you're able to do X but not Y, kind of thing. But that's, that really is the discussion, because those are the instructions that ultimately we need as we build the budget, because then we know, okay, we're going to lower the tax rate, it's going to go to this dollar amount, that means we, instead of having $24 million available to figure out how to program, we've got 19 million available to figure out a program, and, and then let's move forward and stuff. And then we would, then it's incumbent on us to share with you all what we can do with that 19 or 20 million, and what we could have done with, with the other piece of it. But tho- those are exactly the kinds of conversations that really are necessary in order to move, move those conversations forward. And, and I use real estate, but that's true if, you know, it's harder to kind of project what the implications might be by expanding, like, the disability or senior freeze pieces and stuff. But there's still a way to kind of get some sense of that. So any of those kinds of levers that you move, one way or another, certainly, there, there should be much more discussion around each of those, if that's, ends up being where the council wants to go. Yeah.
Mr. Pretty?
Thank you, Mayor Lee. I'd like to thank Vice Mayor Cobb for bringing up this point, and I do think it's important we're hearing from a lot of constituents who are cost-burdened and pointing to what's happening with the assessments of their homes. I, I would be against changing the rate, at least as it is right now, where we are in the budget process, mainly out of concern for the reduction that that would have for the schools, and knowing that they've already set, mostly what their budget would be. Bob, I was going to ask, so my understanding was sometime earlier in the year, we had revenue projections for this upcoming year, that I think were a little bit higher than we have currently. Could you tell, like, what the source of those changes were, and then I have two follow-up questions?
Yeah, so we, so we have, historically, we won't do revenue projections until probably around February, March timeframe, and that's because we're trying to get as much information as we possibly can, in order to be as accurate as we possibly can. And when I say information, meaning we know what our real estate projections are, we kind of have an idea where personal property is headed, we've got many, many more months of trend that we're evaluating associated with that. The last two years, we've actually tried to do that projection earlier, and it really is just a guess. I mean, it's a guess as to what we think is, is going to be the, the ultimate projection in terms of revenue, and then based on that, what it is that would be the schools' share and so on, no different than what the state does. State's creating projections, and those projections, as you know, change wildly throughout the years. Now, ours don't change quite as dramatically, because we only have so many buckets. When that first projection came out, we were, we were projecting more revenue than we ended up actually ending up in our projection, and that had to do with performance around sales tax and some other kinds of things associated with it. And the challenge for the schools, much like us, is they're starting to build their budget off of those projection numbers, but, you know, it's always very clear that those are just that, they're, even now, even with the approval of the budget, it's still a projection. I mean, we still really don't know what we're, I know we are, we are recommending in the budget $106 million to go to the schools, but that is still a projection. If revenues don't perform that way, they will get less than $106 million. If revenues perform greater, under the current formula, they would get more than $106 million. So, but that, that's sort of how it unrolls, and we try to do it earlier, the reason we try to do it as early as we can is because we really need kind of a fixed number that we're working off of, that we really are saying, okay, that's what we're building the budget off of. And then we readjust, I think in March is when we came back and said, okay, here's the readjusted number.
So, and, and thank you for reminding me, that, I think it was the change in the projections for the sales tax.
Yeah, there were a couple of categories. Personal property also was moving slower than what we had originally thought that it might.
What I would encourage this council to consider instead, knowing that this budget is mostly set, and to not change what any of our ongoing expectations are for expenditures, is, is to look at what the actual revenues are at the end of the year, and to consider a return in the form maybe of the personal property tax. I know that I'm about to go pay mine today. And whether or not that reduction could be something that's returned to taxpayers in this current fiscal year, or whether or not that money can be loaded into the upcoming budgets, so that there's a reduction in that personal property tax rate for an upcoming year. But something I don't know if we have the authority to do, and I think would be more helpful, is, is whether or not there could even be some kind of policy about, it's the assessments that are really, I think, impacting people of their homes. And when they see a dramatic increase in their assessment, it's hard for them to be able to, to plan for the change that that's going to have in their real estate. And whether or not that assessment can be, you know, if it goes up, let's say 30%, if it can be spread out over a certain period of years, but if they were to sell the home, they have to true-up with the city before something like that happens, that way they're not all cost-burdened in one year when they had that valuation change. I'd like to also thank Councilmember Moon Reynolds for bringing up the important point, as I keep referring to, is that the land value tax. But we do have a number of parking lots in the city that are valued, you know, cheaper because they don't have the certain amount of improvement value of, of built property on it, and that property might be utilized in better ways, or parking could be condensed in a way that, that we would see more revenue come in there. But, but I really hope that this council would consider with anything that's beyond projected revenues, that that be sought to be returned to the taxpayers in some way, and maybe we'd be prudent with expectations of setting rates in the future in either the form of assessments or a reduction in our personal property tax in some way. Because I do think about the number of homeowners that this impacts, but there are a number of homeowners that, that do not live in Roanoke, who, that, that, anything that they save won't necessarily be passed on to their renters. And if you look at localities across the Commonwealth, there are a number that are increasing their tax rate, and then there are a number that are in the same situation as us that are not increasing their tax rate, but their constituents are still going to see an increased tax that they're paying because their assessed value has increased. And so, I know it's a difficult situation that we're in, but I hope that this can be reviewed on the, the end of the year, rather than on the front end right now.
I think this was the most divergent across the state of communities on tax rates, to your point. I mean, they're, they're, just even around us, there are jurisdictions lowering their tax rates, there are jurisdictions holding steady, and there are jurisdictions raising their tax, and that's, that's rather unusual. I mean, typically, what we've seen is, pretty much everybody kind of stays on the same path, and you might have one outlier. Last year is a good example, where pretty much everyone kept their tax rates roughly the same. Lynchburg was the outlier. Lynchburg did a significant last-minute reduction on theirs. This year, it really has, across the state, as you said, been kind of, and, and everyone really is in the same situation as us, in that revenues are increasing, values are increasing. So the underlying fundamentals are no different, they're just responding to different needs within their community in a way differently than what I've seen over the last several years. And I, and I did want to say on, and I think you all notice, with the, with the, in, year-end surplus, if there is any, and stuff, we do a little bit of what, what you just were highlighting, which is, so there's, there's some things that we use those dollars for that we have to, and that's, for example, we have to actually shore up our reserve balance, our fund balance, our reserves, because in that case, revenues outpace, expenditures and revenues often outpace, so we have to put more money in there. But we actually do, when you see things in the year-end that talks about placing money, for example, in capital contingency, that actually is taking a, a chunk, if you will, of that money, in this year, a couple million dollars, and moving it forward into the next year to lower the costs that we would have to borrow. So we do a little bit of that currently. You're limited somewhat in what you can do, kind of, year over year from accounting practices, but there definitely is some of that piece. We certainly, with the exception of the one year where we did the rebates with the personal property, we certainly have not explored options of how, you know, is there a way in which to return? There, there probably is not a way to return dollars, and I'm glad you mentioned personal property, because there probably is not a way to return dollars on the real estate side of things, because of all kinds of complications associated with that, both legal and mechanical. But there are, there may be other ways to do that, and certainly, we can make that a part of the conversation as we progress toward, we do expect a surplus in FY '24 or so, as we progress into that discussion.
And Mayor Lee, just as a final point on that, it, under our current funding formula with the schools, but what I prefer on this being done on the back end, is that it allows us to decide what we want to do with our piece, but it, it sets what the actual revenues are, so that the schools can still figure out what to do with their piece.
Yeah, yeah, the school, I mean, that's the advantage of also setting, you know, at this point, kind of, what our projections are, basing the formula off those projections, is, that allows both of us, both the schools and us, to plan for what we anticipate getting. Neither of us plan, nor should we plan, on, on a surplus. In other words, you won't see in a budget where we're saying, you know, hey, these dollars, matter of fact, we have to monitor through the year, I'll use overtime as an example, that if, if through the year, we were accumulating public safety overtime at a certain rate, and it appeared that there was not going to be a surplus, we would have to start adjusting our budget at that point, because we don't budget assuming there's going to be a surplus. Neither does the school. School budget's off of what it is that we've indicated. So that $106 million that we're sending over, that's what their budget's built off of. If they get a surplus, they've got ideas of how they would ultimately use those, just as we do, but no one should be budgeting, assuming there's going to be a surplus with it, which, again, they don't, and neither do we.
Good, thank you. This all happened, Mayor Lee.
Anything? Ruby?
Yes. Bob, a lot of times, people talk to me about our tax rate here, and they compare it to the county. Could you explain to the, to the citizens the difference in our responsibilities that we have to?
Sure, sure. So probably two of the biggest differences, I think, that, that exist are, one, which they are the beneficiary of, and the other is really by choice. So the, the one that they're a beneficiary of largely deals with transportation, and the, so all, essentially, all of the roads in the county are state-maintained. Essentially, none of the roads in the city are state-maintained. Now, we are fortunate that we are able to compete for discretionary funds. Sometimes those are for maintenance. A good example is the, sometimes they're for maintenance, sometimes they're for capacity enhancement. A good example is the Orange Avenue project that's getting ready to start, that is largely funded by the Department of Transportation through a discretionary grant program. So in other words, we have to compete for certain dollars that are provided by right to, to the county. Really good example of that is, the county owns, as far as I know, unless maybe they own a couple for their own parking lots, they own no snow, snow plowing equipment, because they don't snowplow. That's what the state does for them. We have to, as you know, we just put some more money in the budget, we have to actually do that for all of the city streets, as, as an example, and they, they don't. So they're the beneficiary of that. That, that is true across the Commonwealth. You know, every, every city is, independent city is in that situation, as they are with every other county, and it's just a legacy of how those, those programs are funded. So that allows them to actually have a much, much smaller public works department, it allows them to effectively not have to manage stormwater, because that's usually associated with streets. They don't do things, like I said, like winter weather operations, so they don't have any of those kinds of operations associated with it, because the state takes care of, of that work. You won't see an item in their budget, like, we have $6 million in our budget for street paving. You won't see that item in, in the county's budget, because they don't street pave, the state takes care of that, has, has worked through it. The other one, I think, is, is more kind of their choice. You all, through our budget, spend a significant amount of money for external agencies, and so think again, there are certain things, like Blue Ridge Behavioral and the Health Department, that we jointly share, county, county puts money toward those, just as we do. And, and then there are others, all of those social service agencies, the funding that we put in place for homeless services, all, all of those kinds of activities, we talked about the zoo, we talked about some other, those are by and large supported disproportionately by the city, and, and not by the county. And that's just a choice, that's a choice they make in their, in their budget process, as to what, you know, what they'll fund in those, in those areas. So those are two of the larger differences, I think, between the, the two budgets. And, and, you know, that's true if it's Bottot County or, you know, any of the other counties, it's not just Roanoke County, that's, that's true for all of the counties that surround our area. A good example, a good contrast by that is Salem. So Salem, for example, is another independent city, participates financially in the funding of Valley Metro, as an example. So they, as a city, have decided that they want transit services in their city, they contribute funding for that. The county doesn't contribute funding, and the county therefore doesn't have transit service in the county. So that's another, I kind of consider that somewhat like an external agency, even though it's, you know, part of, part of the, part of the city and stuff, too. But, so those are the fundamental differences between those. You know, they probably also experience, I know their, their housing prices are more valuable, because there tend to be newer housing across their, their system, there, you know, are fewer homes than what we have in the community, but the individual homes tend to be worth more, and so therefore, the tax benefit that they get from each home is, is higher at a lower tax rate, if that makes sense, with, with that piece of it and stuff. So now we have the advantage of, we have a lot of very valuable real estate in downtown that, that they don't benefit from, and, and we do and stuff. So, so those are some of the differences, I think, between those.
And I just want to say a couple of, two things more. One of the things, I do feel the pain that the people are having now with, with the higher real estate tax, but I also feel like, for the first time, we'll be able to give our employees a much-needed raise. Not a whole lot, but it's 3% is a lot more than they had before. And also, we'll be able to retain employees, not just our city staff, but also our first responders.
Yeah, and remember, too, the, part of the reason we're doing, what we're doing with compensation, is because all of our surrounding jurisdictions are doing that. So we, we are in, particularly when we're talking about, like, public safety, we're in competition with Roanoke County, and with Bottot County, and Salem and others, and so part of what we've got to do is maintain that pace with, with them. And so, yes, I mean, that's a, you, you all know, I think we, and again, I'm going off memory here, but $24, $25 million increase in the overall budget expenditure, over $11 million of that is directed at compensation. So it is predominantly what we're increasing this year, just as we did last year, was, was compensation for the employees. And again, it was on that list that I was talking about earlier, of things to kind of look ahead into the next year, there's going to be another need to push again on compensation, because we've got most of the folks now where we, where we want to have them kind of started, but now we've got to start creating some separation in those, based on tenure, as well as, you know, just time that they've been with the city and stuff, too. So I would say we're not necessarily yet done, although honestly, in this, in this talent environment across the country, I don't know that we'll ever be done. I mean, private sector's dealing with this, every jurisdiction's dealing with this, is we've got to keep pace with pay for, for those employees, from, from the entry level all the way up to the directorate level.
And we're still behind Roanoke County. Roanoke County pays more, correct?
We are very, very close now. I mean, we're within a few hundred dollars, depending on which, which one, you know, whether you're talking about police or fire. But we're still not, we're still not close in some of our other professional positions. You know, engineers or accountants, for example, might get paid significantly more in Roanoke County than they do here. And the advantage we have in those cases, where we might have five or six of those, and they have one, so when they fill that one, I'm not at risk of losing the next four. But it's very, very difficult to retain folks when those positions come open in those other jurisdictions.
Especially some of our truck drivers, I think they get paid $19 an hour, and if they go someplace else, they get 25 at least.
Well, I mean, think of the, for example, think of the bus drivers that drive the buses for Roanoke City Schools. Now, they're not, they're not Roanoke City School employees, they're contract employees, but when you see, you know, you see this, the banner that'll come up soon, hiring drivers, and they're paying way more than we can pay those drivers, and often having a, some kind of signing bonus attached to that also. So yes, absolutely, all of those, you're competing with every, every truck that drives on the interstate, you know, you're competing with, we are competing with them, and making sure that we have those folks that are actually here in our, in our community. The folks that take care of our heating and air conditioning, and electrical systems, plumbing systems, you know, we're competing with all of those private vendors, if anybody's had any of that work done in their home recently, you know, you know how expensive that is, so, and part of that's because of what they're paying those folks. And if we don't meet those markets, then we won't have those positions filled. And actually, that's, in that regard, that's actually where we are with those trades positions. We have far more vacancies in those positions than we do positions filled, because of the, the pay that we have associated with it.
And one last question, and please forgive me if you gave me the answer, but for next year's budget, is Station Number Eight on the budget?
Yes, so we have, so currently, and this spans this year and next year, we have dollars available for the design, and then it's '27 is when we pick up the construction. So currently, we're finalizing all the land acquisition associated with the station, then we'll go through into design for the station, and then in '27, we'll start the construction on the stations.
Have you found a location for the station yet?
Yeah, you're talking about the one on Williamson, or that, you're just talking about Station Eight, not Station Two, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, Station Eight is on our list of unfunded, so, yeah, Station Eight, the, the South Roanoke Station is on the list of unfunded, and no, we have not, we've identified a location, I just don't have $3 million to buy that location. Goes back on that unfunded list, I mean, there's, you know, if I had that extra money, we would probably buy a location, that we, even if we weren't building for a number of years associated with it, so.
Thank you.
Well, it looks like all we have, Bob.
All right. Well, I appreciate it, then. My expectation is, you know, you, you all will have the, the final budget, which, again, isn't going to differ much from what you've received as recommended for action on the 13th, along with all the associated ordinances. If anyone thinks of any other questions, obviously, just let us know in the interim stuff, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, based on the agenda, that completes- Madam Clerk, based on the agenda, that completes our morning briefing, and we'll now be in recess for our closed meeting, and we'll reconvene here at 2 o'clock. Thank you.